Okay, it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. If you would stand please and join me in a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the planning commission meeting held on August 11. Does anyone have any corrections to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve them as submitted?
A motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
Second. Second by Commissioner Gustler. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. We also have a public comment period at this time. Each item has a public hearing, so you'll have a chance to comment on each item as it comes up, but if anyone has any general comments they'd like to make, now's the time to do it. And seeing none, we'll proceed with the first item. This is a request to find the small-scale future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area and recommend approval of the small-scale future land use amendment from agriculture to industrial, Max 0.60 FAR, for the property owned by Randall Real Estate Investments, Inc., and located east of Clarkona Road, north of Stone Road. We'll proceed with the staff presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the city's planning division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from agriculture to industrial for approximately .99 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow. And to the northeast and south are retention areas along with State Route 414. And to the west are the former Nelsons &amp; Sons nurseries. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to IL Light Industrial District, which will be presented at the next agenda item. And the proposed industrial future land use is compatible with the previously mentioned IL zoning. In addition, industrially zoned or industrially oriented parcels are in the vicinity. The development review committee recommends approval of the small-scale future land use amendment to industrial. And the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from agriculture to industrial, subject to the findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
No.
Okay, thanks. Does the applicant have a presentation? And sir, if you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Sid Valane, 1540 International Parkway, Lake Mary, Florida. No presentation, just here to be available to the commission should anyone have any questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
No.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I move that we find the proposed small-scale future land use amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area and recommend approval of the small-scale future land use amendment from agriculture to industrial, Max .60 FAR, for the property owned by Randall Real Estate Investments, Inc., and located east of Clarkona Road, north of Stone Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item for this same property is a request to find the proposed change of zoning from AG Agriculture District to IL Light Industrial District, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning for the property owned by Randall Real Estate Investments, Inc., and located east of Clarkona Road, north of Stone Road. We have a staff presentation.
For the record, Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the city's planning division. The applicant is proposing a rezoning from agriculture district to IL Light Industrial District for the same property as the previous agenda item highlighted in yellow. The proposed IL zoning is compatible with the proposed, or previously proposed, industrial future land use. And the development review committee recommends approval of the rezoning from agriculture to Light Industrial District, with the recommended motion for this evening being, find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from Ag Agriculture District to IL Light Industrial District for the property owned by Randall Real Estate Investments, Inc., and located north of Stone Road and east of Clarkona Road. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are happy to address any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thanks. And the applicant's available for questions as well?
Available for questions.
Okay, any questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find a proposed change of zoning from AG Agricultural District to 1-L Light Industrial.
That's I- L.
Light Industrial District, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning for the property owned by Randall Real Estate Investments, Incorporated, and located east of Clarkona Road and north of Stone Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Gustler. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a request to find the proposed text amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval of the text amendment to the City of Apopka Comprehensive Plan, Public School Facilities Element, Policy 3.1. And we have a staff presentation.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Bobby Howe, Planning Manager. Policy 3.1 of the Public Schools Facilities Element of the Comprehensive Plan applies to the developer-initiated comprehensive plan amendments or rezonings which increase density of residential property. This policy of the comprehensive plan does not allow the city to approve either a comprehensive plan amendment or a rezoning which increases density until Orange County Public Schools has determined whether capacity exists at the time of the change or executes a capacity enhancement agreement known as a CEA, which provides for capacity for that development. In 2020, Orange County Public Schools stopped issuing capacity enhancement agreements with residential developers, but are still issuing capacity determinations. So what that is basically, capacity, is the school board will take a look at a project whenever they apply for a future land use amendment or a rezoning, and they'll check to see if there's capacity generated by that increase in density that's proposed for that. So that's what capacity is. And you have concurrency, which applies at plan approval stage. So there are two different actions. And before, in cases where OCPS has determined that there is no capacity, these projects would enter into a CEA with OCPS and then proceed forward through the approval process, going forward to the planning commission and then the city council for approval or denial. Now, for projects where OCPS determines there is no capacity available, they are inconsistent with Policy 3.1 of the Public Schools Facilities Element of the Comprehensive Plan, as they cannot attain a CEA since Orange County Public Schools has no longer entered into CEAs with applicants. This has caused residential developers to either withdraw their applications or wait until the text of the comprehensive plan has been amended to ensure their request is consistent with the Public Schools Facilities Element of the Comprehensive Plan. Staff is proposing this text amendment to the comprehensive plan to remove language related to CEAs, which are no longer entered into by OCPS. So basically, CEAs don't exist anymore. So that's why we're changing the comprehensive plan to take that out of this. Orange County Government, the amendment that you have before you, this language is word for word what Orange County Government is doing, and it'd be consistent with all the Public Schools Facilities Elements within the county. But DRC recommends approval, and staff recommends approval. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I do. So I understand that you know I'm going to have the approval of the Orange County Public Schools for a project. But now, it sounds like the onus would be on the city council to go forward with a project.
Correct.
So if you have no input, if they have no input from the school system as to if capacity exists, now the developer comes to the city council looking for approval. Now, isn't the city council at risk now of approving something that might not happen in future? With your capacity?
Sure, Mr. Washington. There's a couple of options that are being floated around. One is called a joint approval process. This has been floated by Orange County Public Schools, I believe, and Orange County Government, where the, if you have a school that's in an unincorporated area of the county but takes projects that's in the city, that the project would dump into that school, Orange County and then the City of Apopka would approve the rezoning of the comprehensive plan amendment request. That's one option. It's not been laid out yet. So it's really kind of up in the air as to what's going to happen with that. But there are no such thing as CEAs anymore. We've had, last month, we had a project that was going to come before you. It's called Clontz Farm. They withdrew due to this requirement because they needed to get a CEA, and they were told they couldn't get one.
Okay, so my point is this. So the city and Orange County could be at risk by approving something, and they build homes and the schools in the surrounding area can't accommodate the kids?
Could be. It remains to be seen. Orange County is the only county that I know of in the state of Florida that does capacity enhancement agreements. I've worked in two other counties in central Florida where you just go straight to concurrency, which is Florida law. Basically, your project either satisfies concurrency, there's going to be enough student stations in the system to accommodate your project, or it's not going to be. If there's not going to be, then you have to enter into an agreement to either donate land or pay a dollar figure. Capacity enhancement was unique only to Orange County, as I understand it, and it was basically a dollar figure that a developer would give to the school board to mitigate the impacts of their project.
Further questions?
Yeah. Mr. Howe, just from a practical standpoint, how many times would you say, historically, how many times when a development went into an Orange County school say, "We have all the capacity we need for this subdivision"?
Very rarely, at the rezoning or comprehensive plan.
My point being is that I don't recall them coming across and going, "No, we're fine. Go ahead and do whatever you want." So fundamentally, it's not really going to change what goes on now, other than we can't be held hostage by the school board.
Right.
Yeah, there's been occasions where one school, or sometimes two out of the three, might have capacity, but then that one might be under capacity by the equivalent of like one or two students. And the way it was written is, it did not really give us that option to say, "That's only one student," or "Two students." And with the potential, like Bobby had mentioned, with a joint review, Orange County would have to look at it, possibly a COE would have to look at it, and it actually does, that could have the potential of bogging down the system even more, because somebody could come into us or into Orange County, and then they've got to wait for somebody else to do a review, and then it still comes down to whether or not you and city council do the approval. So...
Yeah, for instance, the Clontz Farm project, they failed at capacity, I believe, at the elementary school, because they were 12 seats short. They passed middle and high school, but elementary was off the table. It was 12 students stations that they failed at.
Well, and I think maybe that's aggravated by the school board doesn't build proactively. In other words, they wait, react after the fact, and then so that kind of puts us on a rock and a hard place. In other words, Mr. Washington, the school board never says, "Well, we need to build a couple of schools here because this area is growing." They wait until they're absolutely overcapacity, and then they come back and build it. Because one of the problems that they run into is, if you have five subdivisions and they're all 10 years older than the other, by the time you build a new one, all the kids in the first subdivision are gone. So it's really hard for them to predict, so they kind of react after the fact. So if you hold up a developer on the school board, "We'll never build anything in the city of Apopka."
And in the way...
Basically, be a discretion hall.
In the way that Florida statutes is written, they basically can't build proactively. They have to wait until you have, until they're overcapacity, and then they try to catch up. And of course, everybody knows it takes a few years to get everything approved, and... So...
The way we're growing, that bubble's going to get bigger, probably.
Yes.
Okay, further questions? Okay, thank you. This being a staff item, I assume there's no petitioner, so we will close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to find the proposed text amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval of the text amendment to the City of Apopka Comprehensive Plan, Public Schools Facility Element, Policy 3.1.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gustler. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a quasi-judicial item, and it's a request to approve a variance of the Apopka Code of Ordinances, Part III, Land Development Code, Article III, Section 3.3.4(c), to reduce the required minimum rear yard setback from 25 feet to 20 feet for the property owned by Michael and Laura Bogle and located at 2936 Poncon Meadow Drive. And since this is a quasi-judicial item, I would ask if anyone seeks special affected party status in this item. And seeing none, I would ask the commissioners if anyone has had ex parte communications on this item.
No, sir.
Okay, and seeing none, we'll proceed with the staff report.
For the record, Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the city's planning division. The applicant is proposing a rear yard setback variance for 2936 Poncon Meadow Drive. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and located in the Wakaba Run Phase 1 subdivision. Article III, Section 3.3.4(c) requires a 25-foot rear yard setback in the RSF 1A zoning district. The Wakaba Run Phase 1 subdivision had the R1 AAA zoning prior to the adoption of the new land development code on March 6, 2019. The R1 AAA zoning required 20-foot rear yard setbacks, and the applicant is requesting a variance for a 20-foot rear yard setback. The survey shows the building pad for lot 26 with the proposed space for a home addition and the proposed 20-feet 4-inch rear yard setback. Attached to the staff report is the variance process. And also attached to the staff report are the applicant's responses to the nine statements of competent substantial evidence. The planning commission may approve, approve with conditions, or deny the variance request. And this concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff?
No, I have a question for the attorney, though. What's the definition of hardship? Are you married, boss?
I don't think there's a set, there's not a set definition for hardship in our code. What I think is, you do, you follow the, what are the criteria established for there to be a variance, for a variance to be granted? It is the obligation of the applicant to submit competent substantial evidence to support their request for such a, for such a variance. So at that point, it's whatever evidence they present as to the, what they're going to do in support for the variance. Limiting it down to just define hardship can raise itself to subjective definitions instead of going through the objective requirements and standards that the code provides for a variance.
So we have to discuss what the hardship is. Correct.
Right. That could be discussed, and they would have to present their evidence, and then you determine whether they have established competent substantial evidence in support of that standard in order for there to be a variance granted or not.
Okay, so I have a question for staff. What is the hardships?
Well, in this case, as Phil presented during his presentation, is that the original zoning did have a 20-foot setback.
That's correct.
When we adopted the new code back in March of 2019, we changed a few of the zoning categories. We combined a few others, and that changed the zoning in that district and in that area to 25 feet. So if you look at the aerial, which staff did, there's quite a few homes that are 20 feet. And so what we figured is that they're going to the original 20 feet that was part of the original development and no further. I mean, they're basically matching what quite a few of their neighbors already have.
No, I understand that.
So that's the hardship, is that they...
Well, it could also be considered a self-created hardship by not...
It's, they didn't really create the hardship, staff and...
The staff created the hardship?
Correct. Because we changed the setback requirements for this particular subdivision.
Why did you change the setback, then? Why did you create the hardship?
Again, what we did when we combined different subdivisions or different zoning districts, we couldn't make all of them exactly the same as what they were before. In this case, there's, we do have occasional people that want to do something a little bit different than what their original house setback was. In that, in this case, that's it. We would have loved to have gone back and made some exceptions, but we don't know what those exceptions would end up entailing over the course. That's why we have the glitch amendments, that we, you know, we're not just correcting all the other things, but we're finding other things that we, that staff believes could be a problem in the future, so we're making sure that we correct those also.
Now, another issue here is, there would have to be no legal use of the property without the variance. But there is legal use of property.
There is, but again, what we're doing is just simply going back to what the original code, that that whole subdivision was adopted under.
That sounds like more like a waiver or special exception.
Well, it's called a variance or special exception.
Sorry?
That's all.
Pardon me?
It's, yes, we don't do waivers, though. The official term is special exception or variance.
Special exception, right.
So that's what we're doing. It's exactly what we're doing.
Which you're calling a variance.
Yes.
Within the special exceptions, have different criterias?
No, well, a special exception differs from a variance in that it's a, it's when contemplating a use. Special exception deals with uses. You cannot seek a variance for a use. Variance can be sought for other, for certain requirements, such as setback, yard minimum standard, minimum design standards, but you cannot seek a variance for use, which would mean, I operate, I'm in a single-family zone district, I want a duplex, hence I'm going to come in and ask for a variance to allow me to have a duplex. No, because there's no such thing as a use variance. There's a variance as to your dimensional structures, but not as to how you use that structure. A special exception is an additional use in which the code has allowed for another use, perhaps a little more intensive than those that are permitted by right, but it's only such a use is conditioned on you meeting certain standards in order to operate that more intensive use within that zoning district. So variances are more dimensional, I guess, perhaps the best way to describe it, while a special exception is solely limited to the use of the property.
Well, building a structure on it would be use, right?
No, well, no. The use is how, what you're to use the property for. So industrial uses, commercial uses. Now, if I, if I, if I have a use for a special exception for a use that is a little more intensive and I get the approvals, and now the building I send, I intend to build on that structure for my special exception, I'm going to go beyond what are the dimensional requirements the code requires, then you're going to have to seek a variance for your special exception. But the best, the easiest and clearest way to distinguish the two is, variances relate to dimensional and special exceptions relate to the uses of the land.
Well, I don't think this meets all the criteria of a hardship. It's bad timing, it's self-composed. One of the explanations was that there were plans. Do you have, is that hearsay, or do you have plans, dated plans?
Say again?
There was something in here about, they had, they made plans before the code was changed.
Well, this was, it was a previously existing house on the site.
Right, but they had made plans, I think somewhere in here, where they, to do the...
No, they decided to expand their house.
Pardon me?
They decided to expand their residential house, matching what other houses in the same subdivision have.
Another one, Mr. Howe, was that they had made plans to expand this, the house before the new setback.
They may have before, you know, staff got the application, so we, we don't know what they planned five years ago, or two years ago.
Something in here about...
Is the applicant here, Mr. Hill? Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Why don't we let them speak?
Right, they have an opportunity to present, and those are the questions. And I mean, I'm, as your counsel, it's not my position to tell you which way to vote. That's your own discretion based on the evidence that's presented before you, if you believe the evidence meets the standard required, to make a decision one way or another.
Okay, further questions of staff? Of staff? Okay.
So I clearly understand what the issue is. So, but the city could have held the applicant to the new setback if they wanted to. So even though the applicant started the planning process before the zoning was changed or setbacks were changed, the city could say, "Well, you need to make a smaller addition."
Well, they did not come in before the code was changed, and the variance is the channel that they can utilize to go with the original code in terms of the setback. That's, it's their option to do that. The other option would have been to allow administration. We, I, as the community development director, I also have the opportunity to grant an administrative variance of a maximum, I believe it's 15%, which does not, it would only get them, it wouldn't get them the 20 feet that they are requesting at this case. Because again, it's a dimensional type of administrative variance that we wrote into the code.
But if they had done this under the old land use code, they would need it in the variance.
They wouldn't have needed to come in at all. They'd just, well, they'd come in and get a building permit.
Right, yeah.
All right, and theoretically, if the variance is denied, they have the option of building their addition up to the current setbacks.
Well, also, if, as I understand it, if we approve the variance, that's final action. If we deny it, they can appeal it to city council.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, further questions of staff?
No, but I just, like I said, clearly, I understand what the issue is. And I live in a community that's a model after where this applicant lives. I understand what they want.
Yep.
You know, that thing is just, I think it's minor.
Okay, does the applicant have a presentation?
I don't have one.
If you would come up and give us your name and address for the record.
I don't necessarily have, sorry. My name is Michael Bogle. My wife, Laura, and I own the property. Don't necessarily have a presentation. I didn't, I was hoping I didn't need one. The, there was, there was, this, the whole process has been somewhat of a comedy of errors. I did contact the city in early 2019 and obtained the setbacks for my property, which were then told me 25 in the front, 10 on the sides, 20 in the rear. We proceeded with the plans. Due to some financial difficulties, we had to put the plans on hold. I don't want to throw anybody on the bus, and I don't know who it was, honestly, at the city, but when we reopened to do these plans and the financials came back into play, I called down again and confirmed the setbacks. Was told the same thing, so we proceeded. I got engineered plans. We got everything engineered, everything ready to be able to pull a permit.
When was that, when you called the second time?
I'm sorry?
Do you remember when it was?
It was early this year. It was January of this year, and I was told the same thing. And Mr. Martinez can actually testify to this. When I received the denial due to the 25-foot setback, I called. Mr. Martinez happened to be the one to answer the phone, and without telling him I had a permit on application, I said, "Here is my address. Can you please tell me my setbacks?" Can you please tell me my setbacks? And he gave me 25 in the front, 10 on the sides, and 20 on the rear, because that's what his system told him. And that's the same thing I was told in January. So, it, and again, it's not Mr. Martinez's fault at all. He was looking at a system that's provided to him. But that's what was in the system, and that's what I was told. So that's what, how we proceeded. It wasn't until Mr. Martinez did the investigating for me to find out that it had been changed, in fact, from the previous, from the builder to what they adopted now, but apparently was not changed in your, in the city's system.
I understand now, and I agree with you.
Right, so, so that's kind of where we, you know, where we were at. We, we did our diligence.
To me, that's the hardship, you know, what you went through.
Thank you.
Doing the engineering work on that, being, that's what the city told you-
Yes, sir.
That was correct. I can, I'll accept that as hardship.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Okay, further questions of applicant, yes, Kay?
All right, so you have a, that's a nice addition. I like it.
Thank you, yeah. I'm hoping that will be.
But anyway, you have a garage with this addition?
Yes, sir.
How does that work with your existing garage?
My existing garage will remain a garage. I'm a bit of a car guy.
But is it, does the driveway provide access to both garages?
Yes, sir. This was actually not the, this was just showing the, what you're seeing here was simply a survey drawing. Is it on here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, well, yeah, so the driveway will, oh, this is cool. The driveway will actually extend there to, to meet the new garage. It just didn't show it in this. This was simply a survey to show them where the setbacks were to be. The actual engineered drawings that were presented, you know, shows that the driveway will be extended to meet the, the new garage.
Okay.
Okay, further questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. As you know, this is a two-step process. The first motion is to show that the need arises out of the physical surroundings, et cetera, and then there's a second motion dealing with the criteria. So, do I have a motion on the-
Chairman, I'd like to just briefly speak on that-
Sure.
Little discussion before. I know we were discussing the, to me, the minutia of what day this happened, and I think that, in my mind, and Mr. Ryan's question about it as a hardship, I went to the neighborhood and drove through the neighborhood and looked at the houses on his street, the street adjacent. There's a lot of houses, I think Mr. Hit referred to that, where it certainly looks like they're much less than 25, and some have structures, addition, or I don't know necessarily an addition, but a shed or an overhang or a porch that's much, much closer than that. And I think backing away from the little stuff in my mind, the big picture, if you buy into a neighborhood, and as you buy in, it's a 20-foot setback, and you see, oh, the neighbor's added on here or there, oh, we're going to have a kid, okay, we're going to add on, okay, well, we can do this, and you kind of plan it out in your head, and whether you dot the i's and cross the t's with the city prior to the ordinance changing, the city, as a practical matter, came in after the fact, when they're living here, we can do this, 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 and this, and even if they haven't put the plans in, in their mind, we can build this addition. And in this case, the applicant had already had the plans drawn up, and then the city changes the rules midstream. Well, that's fine for, for new subdivisions going forward, but I don't necessarily think the rule's intent was to go to older subdivisions and stop people from doing what had been done all along. So I think, you know, we're dwelling on the minutia of it, but the practical matter is that the guy has every right to do exactly what he wants, and a variance is very much called for in this case, I believe.
Okay. All right, we got other discussion?
No, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the planning commission? Go ahead.
I move that the planning commission find that sufficient information indicates a need for the proposed variance arising out of the physical surroundings, shape, topographical conditions, and other physical or environmental conditions unique to the property owned by Michael and Laura Bogal and located at 2936 Poncan Meadow Drive.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorindo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Now, the second part of this relates to the nine conditions. Do I have a motion on that?
Okay. I move that we find the applicant has demonstrated there is competent substantial evidence in the record for each of the nine variance criteria, and approve the request for variance of the Apocca Code of Ordinances, Part III, the nine vari, oh, sorry, Land Development Code, Article III, Section 3 dot 3 dot 4 dot C, to reduce the required minimum rear yard setback from 25 feet to 20 feet for the property owned by Michael and Laura Bogal and located at 2936 Poncan Meadow Drive.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorindo. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Norwood. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have discussion, yeah. Number nine, it's minimum, I talked about doing the minimum. I don't think it's relative or minimum variance. I don't think it's a minimum variance, but I'm going to, I understand the situation he's in and what the city happened to do, and so, I do want to point out number nine was not satisfied, in my opinion.
Okay.
No, you could look at it as the minimum variance to meet the original setback.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I'll go with that. I just had some issues-
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Our next item is also a quasi-judicial item. It's a request to approve a variance of the Code, Apocca Code of Ordinances, Part III, Land Development Code, Article III, Section 3, point 4, point 6, point C, maximum building height standards, to allow a maximum building height for properties owned O, Office District, of 53 feet for property owned by the Florida Conference Association of Seventh-day Adventists and located at 340 Vota Road. And again, I would ask if anyone wishes to have a special affected party status on this item. And seeing none, I would ask commission members if anyone has had ex parte communications on this item.
No, sir.
Okay, and hearing none, we'll go with the staff recommendation, our staff presentation.
Good evening. Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a variance request in reference to a property located south of Vota Road and east of Park Avenue at 340 Vota Road. Subject property is approximately 4.3 acres. Here's the aerial of the property showing western, eastern, and southern adjacent parcels to be vacant. The applicant is requesting a variance from Land Development Code, Article III, Section 3.4, point 6, T, maximum building height, to allow a maximum allowable height of 53 feet in the office zoning district in lieu of the required 35-foot maximum to allow for an addition to an existing church building. Office zoning district permits a maximum building height of 35 feet. An increase in the maximum building height to 53 feet on the, on the subject parcel allows for the height of the additional building on the east elevation to be approximately 40, 48 feet tall, with a five-foot tall steeple, and a 32-foot tall building with a five-foot tall steeple on the western elevation. The variance process includes two steps. As you know from earlier, the first step is that planning commission shall make initial determination of Section 2.5 point A, I'm sorry, 2.5 point 5 point A, 5A1 through 3, as outlined in the staff report. Then, once a positive initial determination is made, the commission shall make positive findings that the applicant demonstrates there's competent substantial evidence in the record in each of the nine items as listed in the staff report as well. The Development Review Committee has no objection to the applicant's request, and per Section 2.5 point 5, planning commission decision shall be one of the following: approval of the variance, approval of the variance subject to modification and/or condition or denial of the variance. Seven applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Yes, I have some questions. The pictures I see of the new building seem to be taller than the old building, even though they're on the same, even though it's from the west side. Is that true? Is the pitch of the roof different between the two buildings? Are they the same?
One, one side is taller. It is, hang on, I'm sorry. So the east elevation approximately with the steeple is taller than the western elevation of it. So the eastern elevation will have 48 feet of height of the building plus five foot for the steeple.
Does the existing building have a steeple now?
There is, I think, a large, Frank, do you want to come up here? There is, I think, a large crucifix on the building when we drove by it. The church itself is relatively pushed back in the parcel where you can really hardly see it from the street.
Right, but the highest requirement on the existing building is in compliance, correct?
The current one, as it exists, yeah.
The existing one, correct, yes. Okay, is the pitch of the roof, is there any difference between the pitch?
The pitches are the same.
You're the applicant?
Yes.
Why don't you give us your name and address for the record, and we'll just combine the discussion here.
Thank you. All right, the microphone, introduce yourself and your address. My name is Frank Campbell. I am the applicant. I represent the church as their architect.
And your address?
My address is in Orlando, is actually 1032 Home Grove Drive in Winter Garden, Florida.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the issue is the east side of the property, correct?
So we have the, well, I'm looking at the front elevation, the rear elevation, the, in general, the overall-
Is that not the, is that the-
Side is sloping downward.
Okay, the bottom one is the, is the east side, no, the west side of the property?
The west side elevation, yes.
Right, okay, and then the other one. Why, why is the new, the new building taller than the existing building?
The ridge line of the new building is taller because it is a church. It is the actual church sanctuary itself. This project was originally built 15 years ago-
Yes, I remember.
-as a two-phase project. Phase one was the offices and social hall, which were currently constructed, and phase two, which was, I understand, approved at the time and permitted, was the church. And the church itself is what we're building now. The original phase two church was 770 seats. It was the height, it was actually taller than this. It had a steeple on it. And 15 years ago, financial difficulties prevented the church from building phase two. So I was hired essentially to redesign phase two to a smaller building, so this now seats a little less than 500 people, 400 and-
450?
450 people, that's correct. And so it's a little bit smaller than what we had before. It's actually shorter than what we had before as well.
Now, on that picture, which part is the condition?
Everything to the left is the addition.
Okay, which?
On the bottom image, to the left, on the top image, to the right.
And so what that picture is now showing is the steeple?
You see the, the little element, if we look at the bottom image to the left, there's a little bumped up element there. And we did present an actual rendering of this. I'm sorry we don't have it handy. But on the left, on the bottom image, you'll see there's a little bump up there, which is a short steeple. The original church had a steeple that was almost 15 feet high. This steeple's only five feet high.
Is there a slight, is there a great difference?
Yes, and the bigger issue with this side, of course, is the grade difference on the, the east side. And so you can see on the east side, the building is two stories. On the west side, the building is one story. That's where you get the height difference. Right. And the east side looks like it's compatible with the code, the west side, the east side, it looks way taller because of that grade difference.
Excluding the, the steeple, what is the difference in the total height of the old building and new building?
In terms of-
The total, the total height. What's the difference between the old building and the new building?
The old building's ridge line matches the new building's ridge line, that's what it was.
I was going to ask that question.
Oh, no, I see what you're saying. It's about, it's about three feet. It's about three feet.
Three feet? Three feet what?
Three feet higher.
Height difference between the existing ridge line and the-
Oh, yeah, that's the ridge line, yeah. I thought your question had to do with the-
No, no, I was trying to cut to the chase. We're asking, we're three feet here.
Yeah.
And then, Mr. Hit, a question for you. What's the, the purpose of the height restrictions? What is the goal of that, that ordinance?
Comparing the surrounding developments, again, because basically we've got water, water on the east, or on the eastern side, so there's really nothing to really be incompatible with. And then to the north, it's basically the same thing. There's a little, there's little woods on the north side, and then on the south, there's enough separation because there's another building there, and then, and then to the other side, there's another, there's a parking lot, and there's another small retention pond, and then a simple farm or a townhouse development. So it's actually separated plenty ways away, but we can't, you know, our codes are in the revenue, not just for one particular site.
No, no, I understand. And again, I looked at the site, and my point was that that's usually when there's a building near, and a residential area where people don't want somebody five stories up next door to them. In this case, you know, squirrels and birds are the only thing that is next door to this.
Right.
So, may I?
Hmm?
May I?
Sure.
So, in effect, the way I look at this thing is that because the land drops off, you need a variance for the higher building because the land dropped off, or the ridge line is almost the same.
On the east side.
That's basically it.
Yes.
So the west side of the, of the new building is going to be in compliance, right?
Yeah, it's 32 feet, I think, or so, yeah.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, it's like building a house into a, into a, into a hill. That's exactly what we're, we're doing here. You got to measure from the low spot instead of the high spot, unfortunately.
Yeah, looking at the, it took me a couple of minutes to figure out what was happening, and it's like, okay, this side is really topographically very different.
Yes. Yep, there's a hardship right there.
I'll buy that.
Okay, further, further questions of either the staff or the applicant? And I'd ask the applicant if you've raised everything you wanted to say.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, my, the motion that the planning commission finds that sufficient information indicates a need for the proposed areas arising out of the physical surroundings, shape, topographical, topographical conditions, and other physical and environmental conditions unique to the property owned by Florida Conference Association of Seventh-day Adventists and located at 340 Vota Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Guster. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Do I have a motion on the second part with the nine conditions?
I move to find the applicant has demonstrated there is competent substantial evidence in the record for each of the nine variance criteria, and approve the request for variance of the Apocca Code of Ordinances, Part III, Land Development Code, Article III, Section 3, point 4, point 6, point C, maximum building height standards to allow maximum building height for properties owned O, Office District, of 53 feet for the property owned by Florida Conference Association of Seventh-day Adventists and located at 340 Vota Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Norwood. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? There being no further business to come before the commission, we'll be adjourned. we'll be adjourned.
Thank you.